has held since early March pre-COVID. But again, given the magnitude of this project and the wide interest from city residents, we felt it important to provide as much access as possible to hear from you. With regards to the in-person aspect of this hearing, everyone's health and safety is paramount. And therefore, in accordance with New York state law, we will be observing the necessary COVID precautions. Namely, everyone attending in person was provided a health screening and attestation form upon arrival. No one should be here without having completed and submitted this form. If we happen to miss you, please reach out to our staff at the registration table and they will assist you. Secondly, unless speaking at one of the microphones, a mask must be worn at all times. Should you require a mask, we do have a supply of personal protective equipment being masks, gloves and sanitizer at the entrance to the ballroom for everyone's use. Anyone wishing to make a comment for the record will be utilized in the podium to my far right. You may remove your mask if desired and the microphone will be disinfected after each use. All remarks must be made from the podium. We will not be taking remarks or questions from the floor. Lastly, with regards to COVID precautions, social distancing will be observed. Chairs have been set six feet apart and we ask that the room setup not be disturbed. Should we reach capacity here in the ballroom during the hearing and have a lengthy list of citizens wishing to make comment? We ask for your cooperation in managing the hearing. Now for the fine print. Given the ongoing COVID-19 public health crisis and related executive orders issued by Governor Andrew Cuomo, this public hearing is also being conducted using telephone conference and video conference. As such, participants may access this public hearing virtually through a Zoom invitation on the Nassau County Industrial Development Agency website at NassauIDA.org or by watching our live stream on our YouTube channel, which can be found at NassauIDALive.org. If you are participating via Zoom, the agency encourages all interested parties to select the raised hand icon on your screen if you wish to make a comment. If you are viewing this hearing on a computer, the raised hand icon is on the bottom of your screen in the middle. If you are viewing the hearing on a mobile device, the raised hand icon is at the top right corner of your screen. Once you select the raised hand icon, you will have the opportunity to speak once your name is announced. Please note that this hearing is being both livestreamed and recorded. You can also view this hearing by going to our website at NassauIDA.org. Go to the top of the screen, select watch meetings and you can view the livestream. Please also note that we do have a stenographer virtually attending this hearing. In addition to this hearing being recorded, the stenographer will be transcribing the hearing to make sure certain that all public comments are included in the meeting record. Now, with regards to the stenographer, it is critical that they be able to hear the speakers. Otherwise, they will be unable to adequately record comments. Everyone's comments are equally important, so we ask that the audience be respectful and avoid crosstalk, comments, cheering, clapping and the like. Interested parties may also submit written comments to the agency, which will be included within the public hearing record. To date, we have received numerous emails and letters, all of which have been added to the public record. In addition, all of this correspondence will also be provided to the stenographer, who will transcribe them into this meeting's transcript. All public comments will be shared with the agency board for its meeting on August 25, 2020 at 6:30 PM, when they may elect to take a vote on the approval of the financial assistance for this project. Please note, there will not be a vote taking place here today. The sole purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment. Written comments may be sent to the Nassau County Industrial Development Agency, located at One West Street, Fourth Floor, Mineola, New York, 11501. To my attention, Harry Coghlan, Chief Executive Officer, or via email at info@NassauIDA.org. This is a public hearing pursuant to Section 859A of the New York General Municipal Law, as amended with respect to a project of the agency for Engel Berman at the Beach LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of Delaware and qualified to do business in the state of New York on behalf of itself and entities formed or to be formed on its behalf, which has presented an application for financial assistance to this agency, which application requests that the agency consider undertaking a project consisting of the following. A) One, the acquisition of an interest in an approximately 6.04 acre parcel of land located between Long Beach Boulevard, Shore Road and Riverside Boulevard, City of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, Section 59, Block 116, Lot 38. Two, the construction of an approximately 620,000 square foot mixed-use transit-oriented development on the land, together with related improvements to the land, including but not limited to a parking garage. And three, the acquisition of certain furniture fixtures, machinery and equipment necessary for the completion thereof and collectively with the foregoing constituting the project facility. All of the foregoing for use by the applicant as residential facilities consisting of approximately 200 residential condominium housing units, 238 residential rental housing units, 30 of which units shall be affordable workforce units, and approximately 6,500 square feet of retail space, together with two levels of structured parking. And B, the granting of certain financial assistance within the meaning of Section 85414 of the general municipal law with respect to the foregoing in the form of potential exemptions or partial exemptions from real property taxes, but only with respect to the rental portion, mortgage recording taxes and/or sales and use taxes. And C, the lease license or sale of the project facility to the applicant or such other entity as may be designated by the applicant and agreed upon by the agency. The project facility would be initially owned, operated and/or managed by the applicant or such other entity as may be designated by the applicant and agreed upon by the agency. The company would receive financial assistance from the agency in the form of potential exemptions or partial exemptions from real property taxes, but only, again, only with respect to the rental portion, sales and use taxes and mortgage recording taxes. Notice of this public hearing was published in Newsday, the Nassau Edition, on August 9, 2020, and provided to the Chief Executive Officer of each county, city, town, village, school district and other affected tax jurisdiction within which the project facility is located by letter dated August 7, 2020. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for all interested parties to present their views, both orally and in writing, with respect to the project and/or the granting of the financial assistance. For all participants participating by video conference and wishing to make a comment, I encourage you to select the raised hand icon on your device to be heard. For all persons participating in person and wishing to make a comment, you should have received the sign-up form upon arrival. If you did not and wish to make a comment, again, please see our staff at the registration table outside and they will assist you. Remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. Please be prepared to state your full name with spelling, street name and city/village for the record. Please note, the agency does not accept anonymous comments. Before we begin, I would first like to introduce our deists here today. Immediately to my right, right, in addition to myself, on behalf of the agency, we have our Chairman, Mr. Richard Kessel. To my very far left, we have Andrew Comaremy, Agency Transaction Counsel. To my immediate left, Mr. Thomas Glasscock, Agency General Counsel. To Mr. Kessel's immediate right, we have Mr. Dan Deegan of the law firm Fortelli Deegan and Tirana, Applicant Counsel. Next to him, we have Mr. Peter Curry of the law firm Farrell Fritz, also counsel for the applicant. And then we have Mr. Jan Berman to his right, Principal of the applicant, and also Stephen Krieger and other members of the Engel Berman team. We will now commence the hearing with a brief presentation from the applicant, starting with Mr. Dan Deegan.
Yes, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So, and let me just round out the rest of the project team here. So, we also have Scott Berman and David Berman are also here at the table to the far right. And those are the four principals of Engel Berman. So, the proposed development, and first of all, I'd like to thank the IDA for having this hearing in person and online. I think this is a very significant project, obviously for the developer, but also for the city of Long Beach. And we very much welcome the opportunity to hear public comment. We've engaged in a lot of back and forth and a lot of disclosure here, and this is a continuation of that process. So, the proposed development itself, Engel Berman has come up with an innovative plan to make this development work for all and break the past cycles of failure. That plan entails an as-of-right development, fully compliant with the city's zoning code, and no variances required. The plan calls for 438 units and three aesthetically beautiful buildings, 200 condos separated into two different buildings and 238 rentals in one building. And you see some renderings on the screen here to show, you know, what we think and hopefully everyone else thinks are beautiful buildings, especially given the blighted history of this site. 12% of the rental units would be workforce housing. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. There will be a 6,500 square foot restaurant with a grab-and-go on the boardwalk, which would be separately parked. There's a public plaza on the boardwalk that would be part of the project as well. I mentioned the community outreach and this is a continuation of that. But starting in November of 2019 and continuing through January and February, Engel Berman engaged in an extensive series of community meetings with various civic groups in the city, the Chamber of Commerce and other stakeholders in the city to present this plan. Engel Berman reached out to various elected officials at the city, county and state levels to brief them and keep them apprised of our community outreach efforts. Engel Berman has met with city officials in the city of Long Beach and their financial consultants and have participated in a recent city council work session with regard to the project and with regard to the financial assistance being discussed today. At each of the civic meetings that took place earlier in the year, the general feedback was very positive and supportive of this proposed development. The advantage of this plan is that the condo units will generate full taxes immediately upon construction. The current land-only taxes are about $500,000 a year between the affected tax and jurisdictions. Once the condos are constructed, that number would jump up to $3.5 million a year, which is seven times the current taxes with just the condo portion alone. The super block development will generate over 1,000 construction jobs. The substantial economic impacts of this project will include the construction jobs and purchase of materials necessary for the project, the tax and pilot revenues to the city, school district and county, the direct and indirect economic multiplier effect of new residents spending money in the city. This development will generate annual household spending in Long Beach of more than $5.4 million annually, that is. The annual fiscal impact of the project to the city of Long Beach is greater than $500,000. The annual fiscal impact of the project to the city, to the city's school district is greater than $1.6 million. If you could change, turn the slide to the next slide, which is the graph. Catherine, yep. There's the, there's the graph. This graph illustrates the bottom line, which says land, is basically the current taxes on the property over the next 25 years, what would happen, which is basically assuming a regular escalation that has been equivalent to the tax cap in New York State. Above that is a line showing both the taxes being generated by the condos and the pilot payments combined from the rental combined with the condos and shows the revenue line to the affected tax and jurisdictions over 25 years. The taxes that would be generated from the condominium units and the rental units are projected to exceed $130 million over the term of the pilot. As I indicated, the condos alone once constructed begin at a level seven times the current taxes. And that's the innovative part of this plan is to have the condominium component in order to generate those immediate taxes. Engel Berman is seeking a pilot only on the rental component of the development. It has to be noted that without the requested pilot on the rental portion, this development is not financially feasible and will not happen. The initial request by Engel Berman was for a 30-year pilot after construction. That is what we felt was necessary in order for this project to work financially, given all of the costs associated, extraordinary costs associated with the project. After a lot of back and forth between the IDA and the city, the IDA and city pushed back to where we are now, which is a 25-year pilot. They also pushed back and the current project now includes additional workforce housing units. We're talking about 30 units, which is much greater than the 10% originally proposed. The proposed pilot, as reduced, is the minimum that will allow this development to be, to proceed and be constructed. It should also be noted, and it's been publicized, that the IDA commissioned its own consultant, a not-for-profit that only represents municipalities, to do its own analysis. So, it's not the developer saying this. This is a third-party analyst retained by the IDA that only represents municipalities. And that report concluded that this pilot at the current level is absolutely necessary and it is at a level that will allow this development to be, to proceed and be constructed.
Required to make this development.
It should also be noted, and it's been publicized, that the IDA. However, you have to realize that the requested pilot on the rental component, plus the taxes being generated from the condominium buildings, will generate revenues for the county, city and school district far in excess of the incremental cost to those municipal entities. The city alone, according to the city's own financial consultants and its analysis, will net $32 million in additional revenue after the pilot period. That's net of expenses, whatever impacts this could have on the city. The school district will collect in excess of $75 million during the pilot period and the county will collect in excess of $13 million. So, this project is very financially positive for the city of Long Beach and its various affected tax and jurisdictions. We believe it's very advantageous for the county. I'm not going to get into the history of the site, which is known. But with that being said, I would, you know, turn it back over to the Chairman and to the Director to further public.
Thank you, Dan. And at this point, I'll turn it to our Chairman to see if our Chairman, Mr. Richard Kessel, has any remarks.
Yes, thank you, Harry. And welcome, everyone who is here in person and also who are watching on Zoom and participating in that way. My name is Richard Kessel. I am Chairman of the IDA Board. I should explain a couple of things. First of all, and as Harry pointed out, there will be no decision made today. There have been a lot of social media statements that are completely untrue. There will not be a vote today. Ultimately, the decision as to whether or not to move forward will be made by the IDA Board. The IDA Board is a seven-member board. I am the Chairman of the Board and the other six members and myself were appointed by County Executive Laura Curran and confirmed by the county legislature. The Board meets approximately once a month on a number of projects. And how we operate is that when an applicant files an application with us, as Engel Berman did, we have an initial meeting to get a full review and explanation of the project. Once that is done, we decide whether or not to vote, to preliminarily go forward, not to approve the project, but to review the project, study the project, bring on the consultants necessary to do an analysis for us. Then, we hold a public hearing on the project and the Board then will vote at a further date as to whether or not to approve the various aspects of the project before us. At all junctures, the public is able to speak. So, for instance, when we did preliminary hearing, and unfortunately, at that time, we had to do it by Zoom, as everyone knows, we're going through a pandemic right now and these are very challenging times for all of us. But we were able to allow the public to participate through Zoom. Today, the public can participate either here in person or through Zoom. And when the Board meets, potentially next Tuesday night, if we take this up, a public can participate again in the process. So, you know, one of the things I've read is it's a secretive process. I've been on a lot of boards, I've headed a number of agencies. This is the most transparent process that I know of. We have a very dedicated group of people who serve on the Board. We listen and that's the purpose of the hearing. I want to just say two other things. One, this hearing is partly in-person. I want to indicate that we were asked by some members of the city council and several elected public officials to try and hold an in-person hearing. We decided to do that. This was not easy and I'm sure it's not easy for you either. Obviously, we're in the middle of COVID and it presents a lot of challenges to us. And having said that, we felt it was very important to engage with city residents in person, as did a number of the elected officials and members of the city government. And so, we are here today doing that. And as Harry pointed out, we haven't had an in-person meeting, I think, since February or March. So, this is an extraordinary step and I would reference to say that very few bodies in the state and certainly on Long Island have had any kind of in-person meetings. But we love Long Beach. I am, even though I live in Merrick and grew up in Merrick, I frequently come to Long Beach, actually on my way to the hearing. I stopped off at Toledo Deli, one of my favorite places. And I come to Long Beach all the time. I know many people who live and have lived here. This is a wonderful city. And we felt that it was important not just to do it on Zoom, because it's so impersonal, but also if people wanted to attend in person, that they could do so and we could see each other face to face. So, I want to thank all of the members of the public who came here today. We understand the health risks. Harry outlined the rules. I think it's important for everyone to realize that we have to stick to those rules. I think I would just ask that after you have spoken, you can leave. The room isn't full, so we're in good shape at this point. And I think the three-minute timer for both in-person statements and Zoom statements will be held. And that's an important thing. I also want to indicate one other thing. And that is that, you know, there are all of these rumors and things that are going around, most of which are completely untrue. Ultimately, the purpose of this hearing is to hear, is to hear your position on the project, whether in person or on Zoom. There will be another hearing this evening for people who couldn't participate this afternoon. And we will again be able to hear people. And so, this is a very thorough process. It certainly isn't secretive. And I want you to know that, you know, while we all have our opinions, everyone respects everyone else's opinion. We all have to do that. And while we all have opinions about this project and many other things in the world, we haven't prejudiced this or prejudged this in any way. We will listen, we will analyze, and whatever we decide to do will be a thoughtful decision. I also think, I want to say one other thing, I keep saying that, I don't want to take too much time. We do not lower taxes. I think it's important to understand, you know, putting aside the analysis on the numbers, which, you know, we've looked at a lot of analyses that all indicate millions of dollars over what the city would get if this weren't built. The bottom, the bottom line is that we do not lower taxes in any case whatsoever. We do, we are able to do three things. One, issue pilot payments, which are payments in lieu of taxes that can be any length from five or 10 years up to 30 or in some, one instance recently, the Coliseum, by the previous IDA Board, 50 years. Those payments in lieu of taxes are not lower than current taxes. That's an important point to make. And in fact, in most, if not all instances, the payments in lieu of taxes are structured so that the pilot payments increase each and every year. The other two things that we can do is we can give exemptions on sales tax purchases for construction of the project and mortgage recording taxes as well. So, I want to thank everyone for participating. Please respect each other. Let's try to be polite. I see people here, you all look very nice and polite. And we appreciate the fact that everyone respects the guidelines because I think we'd all agree in this room and people watching, the most important thing is everyone's health and safety. With that, I'll hand it back to Harry. By the way, if you have any questions or comments aimed at me, I'm not shy, as you can see. I'd be glad to answer them. Harry can answer them. I talked to the developers. If you have questions specific to the project, they can answer them. We want to accommodate you in every way we can. Harry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I believe we are prepared to start with public comment. I have six registered speakers here in person and it looks like we have three raised hands on the Zoom call. So, what I'd like to do is we'll start with our first three in person, revert to the three on Zoom and then come back to the next three in person. So, at this point, the first speaker is a Mr. Daniel Delesio. The podium, yes, sir. It's important to use the podium because then the marks will go through the audio and the folks on the Zoom feed can then hear you appropriately, as well as the stenographer.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm a 40-year resident of Long Beach. My children, my son and my daughter are both raised and gone through the school districts and graduated from Long Beach schools. Presently, I'm an active 35-year member in Steinfitter's Local 638. Steinfitter, I don't know if you know, basically installs and maintains heating, air conditioning and all the fire sprinkler protection systems throughout Nassau Suffolk and the Five Burrows. I'm here with my son, who also is a Steinfitter Local 638 and a graduate apprentice of our five-year program. So, it's a family business and we take pride in our work. We're a union and we take pride in our union work. For 35 years, I've been coming to these meetings over the years about that vacant property. And it's always the same. You have a contractor comes who's shovel-ready. He's looking for no money. All of a sudden, a year later, he's looking for money. Nothing gets done. Another contractor comes along. He wants to abuse the project. He wants to build higher. He wants to change our building codes. He comes and he goes. This project seems to be a no-brainer. He doesn't want to change our building codes. He doesn't want to abuse our height. He wants to generate revenue. Revenue to people who are going to go to shop in Key Food, are going to go to the local restaurants, who's going to go use the railroad. I think it's a no-brainer. He's not, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if the plan goes through, it generates revenue. It generates revenue for the city of Long Beach. It generates revenue for the school district and it generates revenue on the, on the street, on Park Avenue. It generates revenue along the boardwalk. I'm, as a 40-year resident of Long Beach, as the 35-year member of Steinfitter's Local 638, as long as union labor is present on the job, I'm for it. My son is for it. My family is for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delesio. Mr. Delesio, did you state your, your address for the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. I live at 31 Georgia Avenue, Long Beach, New York, and that's in the West End.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker in person is Kathleen O'Leary.
Kathleen O'Leary, Long Beach. I would like to say, kind of echo what the last speaker said. Engel Berman has not tried to change the zoning laws, has not tried to build higher than the height requirement in Long Beach. But the thing that they have done, like I-STAR, is threaten not to do the project if they didn't get the IDA funding. As a 27-year taxpayer, I know that when the Engel Berman is given the, I'm going to call it the pilot tax break, that the taxes fall on the residents to pay in their place. So in Long Beach today, we're feeling the effects of three years, of an eight, over the last three years, Long Beach taxes have been raised 18%. We're in the middle of a pandemic. I would say conservatively, 80% of Long Beach is out of work, and 42% of the jobs are not coming back in this country. So I disagree with the initial idea that this is blighted space. I don't know how you would change that. But to me, it's open space. And like that pool that you were showing before, I'm a swimmer. I would prefer to have an Olympic-sized saltwater pool that we could charge admission for, with a glass top like one story high, with parks, with something that would add to the aesthetics of Long Beach. I resent having to pay extra taxes for people that are spending $1 million on a condo. I'm working class, and I think this town is a working class. Engel Berman made 30 million last year in profit. They own all the Bristol assisted living facilities. I know that they're applying to build in Mount Sinai, and they're also applying for an IDA, the IDA of Brookhaven. So I feel like this is not the time to put an additional tax burden on the residents of Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Leary. And if anybody, I should mention, if anybody here on the dais wishes to respond to any comment, you have that option, Mr. Deegan.
Yes, so I appreciate the comments, and certainly that's a concern that people would have. But I just wanted to point out that the city hired its own consultant, in addition to the IDA's consultant, to analyze the city's budget and the net impact on the city's budget, meaning taking into account what the incremental expenses associated with this project would be to the city, and then comparing it to the revenue that would be generated. And they found it to be approximately $32 million to the positive, meaning that that is going to alleviate or stabilize taxes for the remaining residents, not put additional burden on them. It'll be a $32 million net positive after the expenses. So that's, the other things are more policy issues about what... Yes, over the 25-year period.
The taxes are not going to go up over 25 years?
No, they will go up every year.
Yeah, that's my problem.
No, no, whose taxes? And the people who live there, the taxes for this project will go up every year, whether it's taxes, just like any other property. The condos are going to be on the tax rolls.
I understand that.
Yeah.
While pilot is in effect, who's going to be making up for that?
Well, there's not a difference. It's a $32 million positive cash flow. The revenue that is going to be generated is going to be positive, a net positive. So there's no difference to make up. It's actually to the positive for the city. And that's the city's analysis, not ours. We did our own analysis and our consultants, but then the city did their own analysis. And, you know, my understanding is they agree with that.
Well, that's the city, but what about the taxpayer? The city always gets the same amount of taxes. If you have an entity in town that gets a reduction in taxes through IDA, then the taxpayers have to make, will make a difference, is that the way it was advised?
Right, but this is different, because if you look at the chart that we put up, and Catherine, I don't know if you can put the chart back up. The way, if it stays the same, it'll be the bottom line. What we're talking about doing is creating all this additional revenue that is not going to have a commensurate increase in expenses. The increase in expenses is going to be much less than this increase in the revenues that will come to the city, school, and county. And that's why this makes sense.
Over time.
Over time.
So everyone in their 50s now would be 75 when this is over with? You got to look at your general practice.
No, that's true, but that's the advantage. And that's the advantage of the condominium, and I don't want to keep going on. But the advantage of the condominium is that that part immediately does seven times what's additionally being paid. So you don't have to wait for a ramp up. Once these are complete, those taxpayers will be residents of Long Beach, will pay full taxes. And that's going to be, you know, we're projecting that to be $3.5 million.
And that's why the residents all have an increase in their taxes?
That's right. That's why they, no one ever gets a reduction in their taxes. So I don't want to say a reduction, but it's a stabilization and a hopefully alleviation of the tax burden in some way.
Kathleen, let me cut in here a second. There is, thank you for coming, and I think you bring out good points. I can assure you that the IDA board would not approve any project that would raise your taxes. We're not going to do that. And I know everyone is confused, and we're not lowering taxes. We're adding to the tax base, both on the condos and on the rentals, because if nothing is there, it's about a half a million dollars a year. Both the condos and the rentals will generate taxes and pilot payments that are going to far exceed the amount of revenue that you're getting on vacant property. So the impact on the individual taxpayer is positive. I will tell you this, there's no way that we would approve any project that caused an increase in your property taxes. This, what this will do is actually help lower your costs by putting more money into the city of Long Beach and the county tax base. We're not going to do a quick Q and A. When you speak, you can ask that question.
And Mr. Deegan, can I move forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Leary, thank you. So I believe you're our next registered speaker. So please. And then Catherine, I'm speaking to our chief marketing officer, Catherine Fee, back in the control room. After Ms. Petra speaks, I would like to take the first three Zoom participants.
My name is Petra Hirkmanz. I live at 165 East Broadway, and this is my second home. I have the property for 20 years now, and my taxes spend constantly up every single year. I have now a question to Engel and Berman. Why were you able to build the Aqua Luxury Building without any tax abatement? And this new development, you are in need of a tax abatement.
So let me answer that. Mind if I answer? So, you know, condominiums by themselves are not entitled to a pilot program. And it was a different market and a different time. And this project is an entire six acres of property on the downtown.
That's a huge building, and you used every single inch in the Aqua building right there. What's before, I don't know, that mentally ill building? Probably I raised it the wrong way now. But I'm very nervous. It's such a big building now coming up and all the traffic. This is a different story. Talking about the taxes.
The Aqua is a 36-unit condominium, only 36 units of condominium for sale. This is 438 units, so this is...
But why do you need the abatement now?
Because you can only charge so much rent in the city of Long Beach and be able to get people to take the space. It's not New York City. It's not Los Angeles.
But you knew beforehand, before you kind of came up with the idea of building a new building, you never talked about abatement. And suddenly, now you do your numbers, and then we need money.
We always, from the very beginning, made it clear we needed an abatement. It was in our contract to buy the land. We always asked the IDA ahead of time. We went to civic meetings since last November. We spoke about having an IDA benefit.
The first time you came up with the whole new development, you were always asking for an abatement?
Yes, yeah, because let me remind everybody...
Maybe it was never really clearly spoken to our residents of Long Beach.
So if you recall, the last development proposal that came through was the I-STAR proposal. That was 100% rentals. And it was a pilot, they called it, for 15 years of land-only taxes. And it was a completely different animal than what we're talking about here. The innovative part of this program is to include the condominium component, which is going to generate the taxes, but immediately. But the, you need to diversify the risk associated with a project like this by having a mix of uses, by having a rental component and a condominium component. By doing that, you can finance the rental component by phasing in the new taxes being created there if you have the condominium component at the same time. So from the beginning, what this has been a real step back from the abatements that were requested by the prior developer. This is a big step forward and tremendous revenue generator compared to what was previously proposed. And I will say, because I was at all the early meetings, we let off every meeting, we're talking about the fact that we'd have to go to the IDA and require financial assistance.
Maybe I missed that part, but I kind of feel cheated, because my taxes, property taxes, are going up every, every single year, or every second single year. And now we have an abatement, and I don't know if you really need that building. I'd rather have a park, to be honest, and I donate $1,000 or more for a tree. I would like that, because I'm here because I like the ocean, and I live in Manhattan, and it's nice to get out of the city where it's so crowded. And I feel like Long Beach gets overdeveloped slowly.
Yeah, one of the other things to mention is that the property is currently owned by I-STAR still. We're in contract. I-STAR has a $100 million lawsuit against the city that if this project moves forward, will be alleviated as well. So that's another big advantage, because a park is not really an option, because it's owned by this, you know, basically a bank.
I just had a park. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your being here today. Catherine, are we prepared to move to our first Zoom participant?
Yes, we're introducing John Passanisi.
Mr. Passanisi, you can proceed. Catherine? Catherine, do we have Mr. Passanisi?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Passanisi, P-A-S-S-A-N-I-S-I. I live at 565 East Broadway, Long Beach. Been a resident of Long Beach for over nine years now. I've seen firsthand the recovery process from the devastation of Hurricane Sandy. It's almost eight years now. I feel like we've come a long way. We got a long way to go still. I think this has given us a good chance with the Super project, the Super Block project, to keep the recovery process moving forward in a big way. Not only will this project create hundreds of jobs for construction, but will also generate millions in taxes for the city and millions in revenue for the small businesses. There's still reeling from Sandy, more recently also the COVID-19 pandemic. Engel Berman has committed to using local building trades contractors to construct this project. As a union ironworker, I look forward to working in my hometown and welcoming a good neighbor to my city. I urge the Nassau County IDA to approve the application put before you and help the city of Long Beach get back on its feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passanisi. Catherine, who do we have next?
We have Matty Arisich.
Mr. Arisich?
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know if I'm on screen, or is this going to be, I have a face for radio.
No, you have a face for radio.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you to the city council of Long Beach, the Nassau County IDA, and also the residents for participating in this. Quite frankly, the merits of this developing this site speak for themselves. Transparency, partnerships with the city of Long Beach, the community, the county, Engel Berman, the building trades, the IDA, all working in unison to establish a better quality of life, provide jobs, increase diversity, and keeping the jobs local. Also included are the housing, all relevant issues for Long Islanders and specific to Long Beach. There's additional benefits, such as $130 million over 25 years. The city of Long Beach alone gets $32 million in additional revenue. The school district, 75, and the county gets another 13. But the biggest thing that also helps here is that the proposal complies with the existing building zoning codes, advancements and expansion of sewer infrastructure, enhancing the resiliency from Long Beach. And again, another important thing is eliminating liabilities, which is that lawsuit regarding I-STAR. Look, the building trades have reached a crossroads on whether we'll thrive or merely survive on Long Island. This is primarily based on our ability to understand the city, the community, and a developer's needs, and to remain competitive. It's an integral component for the success of any community. In order to achieve our goal, we must build types of projects such as these, now being proposed by Engel Berman for the Long Beach Super Block. We must summon the will and find the means to form the partnership, which I mentioned, to make this project happen, because failure is not an option for all parties. The building trades need to reinforce the message that the middle class remains solid in Nassau County. And quite frankly, the Engel Berman plan is structured to provide a solid rate of return, an economic return, for the community, the city of Long Beach, as well as the county. Careful evaluation of prior plans of this property led the team to make smarter decisions and not repeat the same mistakes made by other developers. The result will be paving the way for the city of Long Beach to make the most of a parcel of land that's been vacant for more than three decades and creating hundreds of jobs for the hard-working, skilled tradesmen and tradeswomen who are needed to build this project. I urge the city of Long Beach to embrace the new plan submitted by Engel Berman and support the action of the Nassau County's IDA and move forward with the award. It is something that is beneficial for all of us. And I can tell you, speaking from perspective, that this is one of the most significant projects on Long Island, no different than the Nassau hub, where we translated that particular project and saying, "Four decades in the making, and it's going to be successful." This gives you relevance in Long Beach as well, because nearly four decades in the making, you'll be able to create revenue and have a better quality of life for everybody. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate the efforts of everybody, including Engel Berman and the IDA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arisich, for joining us today. Catherine will take one more from Zoom before we come back to in-person.
We now have Stephen Goldfetter.
Are you with us, sir? Mr. Goldfetter? Mr. Goldfetter, can you hear us?
Hi, Mr. Goldfetter might have stepped away.
Okay. Next one?
I'm going to ask Jack M. Jack, are you with us?
Hello?
You may be muted, sir.
Yes, I'm here.
There you are. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Micat, 370 Vanderbilt Motor Parkway, Hop Out, New York, 11788. As I said, my name is Jack Micat. I'm a business representative for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 25. IBW represents several thousand working families here on Long Island. Today via Zoom, Local 25 is here to support the applicant's application. This is a long overdue project and will benefit the city of Long Beach tremendously in many ways, such as, as we already stated, the much-needed tax revenue to the county, the city, and the school district. The project will create hundreds of jobs when jobs are at a premium due to the pandemic. These are tough times for a lot of people. And I have several members, many members, that live in Long Beach that would definitely benefit from this being built. As a resident of Nassau County and a business representative for IBW, I support this project if they use the building trades. So I would like to express the job, you know, the support from the local community. Long Beach is a pro-union city, and it would be nice to see the building trades on this job. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being with us. We'll now take our next three in person. My apologies, I cannot read the first name on this. It is speaker number four. Last name is Egan.
Nora Egan, 340 East Chester Street. Just to be very quick, I just implore the IDA to say no to the pilot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Catherine DiMondi, speaker number five. Next, we have Catherine DeMondi, speaker number five.
My name is Catherine DeMonda. I'm a resident of Long Beach. I have lived in the city for about 12 years. I'm a taxpayer and I own my property. We've gone through Sandy and I just want to take the time out to say thank you to the IDA and to Engel Berman for holding these hearings and giving the residents the opportunity to speak. So I just have a couple of questions. I'm not really in favor of a pilot, guys, sorry. I kind of feel like as a taxpayer and somebody who did live through Sandy, it's not like I got 20% knocked off my tax bill. I do employ people. Not that many, but it counts. I provide employment in Long Beach. Don't get a tax break. I did notice a few things in the figures. I want to know where this net $33 million came from because it's missing the anticipated city services. So this net $30 million figure after you get your pilot and your taxes go down, what happens if that's not correct? You're bringing in at least 438 people with their cars. There's about 1,000 parking spots for the project, right? So you have plans to upgrade the sewer and water lines, but what about our traffic and our roads and all the associated costs that might be necessary if within five years, oh, let's even give it like just six months into construction? So you're anticipating 1,000 construction jobs on our roads with construction vehicles? Is there anything in here that says that when our roads are destroyed and gutted and all these vehicles are clogging our roads, if there is any money left for the city to deal with this influx of damage to our infrastructure and draw on our services? Because I'm not seeing it.
Well, let me just point out that, you know, Engel Berman has developed communities across Long Island and they have a track record. And they have a track record of leaving those communities intact and happy with their performance. Certainly, we would expect the same thing to be done here where, you know, this is gonna be a very professional team, a very professional construction project where, you know, you talk about the public infrastructure that's going to be added in terms of sewer and water capacity, that there will definitely be requirements to restore the roads to the condition or better condition than they were before and where the project, where that infrastructure is put into place. You know, in terms of the expenses, you know, to the city, you know, the city's analysis, you know, we hired a consultant to do that analysis. The city didn't trust that analysis. They hired their own company, who's their current financial consultant. It's not a local person. It's a national firm that does this for the city. And they looked at what they anticipated to be, the incremental costs of the city associated with, with these residents and with these building. And they determined, and they put a number on that. And the $32 million that's being talked about is the, the delta, the increase over that amount of those expenses.
Oh, no, I have your, I have your figures here, but what I'm saying is they're based on anticipated expenses for city services for the project. There's no money allocated if those are wrong.
Well, you know, one of the things that, when we wanted discussions we have with the city, which there's a lot of other revenues also that are hard to predict, in other words, like beach passes are a big part of the revenue for the city. Those, these pilot numbers don't include any beach passes. They don't include other types of revenue that could be generated from people living there.
That's excellent because that brings me to my next question. Because the report on anticipated revenues, that's based on Nassau County as a whole, not Long Beach, and it's from 2018. So if we're in the middle of a pandemic where everybody is staying in, our beach is kept at 50% capacity for the foreseeable future, I might point out, until we get a handle on the pandemic itself, how are those figures considered accurate as some sort of net benefit to the people who actually live here and already pay taxes here?
Well, I indicated we did not count those revenues. So that's not even counted. I'm saying that's just another positive.
That's in the engineer's report. I have that too. So I just happened to notice that they're not really applicable to Long Beach people. They're Nassau.
Right.
Not saying it's not valid to Nassau. I'm saying, but you're counting on things that, A, that it doesn't apply to now.
So that was our report? Is what you're referencing is the report from Nelson Pope and Voorhees? The city conducted their own analysis based upon the 2021 budget. They looked at what their actual expenses are, how their budget is put together structurally, and then anticipated and estimated, what is the incremental cost? What's the change to that budget that's going to be created by this project? What burden are these residents, new residents, 438 residents or however many people live there, going to impose on the city services? They took that into account with a level of expertise that would far surpass, it wasn't done Nassau County-wide or Long Island-wide, that was very specific to the Long Beach budget by the people who actually operate that budget. And it was determined that it's gonna be a net $32 million positive after those expenses are incurred by the city.
Right. I understand that having the two condo buildings brings in net revenue and it accommodates the rental building. My point is, is do you really need a tax abatement for a rental building where you're generating income?
Yeah, I mean, the answer is yes. And the analysis that's been done, not only by us, because we understand people don't want to trust what the developer says, the IDA hired their own consultant, which is a publicized report, that took all of our numbers, were an open book in terms of what our costs are, what our projections are, and determined that this project cannot be done without the requested financial assistance and pilot on the rental component. That, that's the conclusion of the IDA's consulting.
Maybe it's not the right project then because, again, I didn't get a tax break when I had to fix the damage from Sandy.
See, the only thing I would say on that issue, you know, people say tax break. Right now, there's no taxes to be given a break on. What we're talking about is creating $32 million or more than that of new taxes coming in, $130 billion. And then...
From additional residents who will require services and use our infrastructure. So it's not like, it's not like you're leaving the lot static. Right now, the lot does nothing.
Well, that's true.
It doesn't draw services and it doesn't cause damage.
So if you could, Ms. DeMondi, if you could just wrap up your commentary.
Understood. As long as these questions that I'm putting forward, if everybody can hear them, everybody can think about them, think about what numbers are missing from this analysis and really give some thought to whether this project is the appropriate project for that space in Long Beach. Because I'm gonna say, 1,000 construction workers working here for two to three years can cause a lot of damage. And those are temporary jobs and they don't benefit the residents of Long Beach unless they actually live here. And I'm hearing an awful lot of go development from people who don't live here, who will benefit from, you know, a nine-month job, a 15-month job. I'm not knocking it. We all want work, but at whose expense? Because I don't want it to be at my expense. And I don't think I'm out of line for saying so. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
We will move to our speaker number six, Eileen Hessian, if I say that correctly. And then Catherine, after that, we have one more in-person speaker registered, so I will take that person. And then I see we have seven on Zoom, so after I take the next person in person, we'll move to the Zoom. Thank you.
Eileen Hessian, 516 West Beach Street. I'd like to say that I agree with many of the points that Catherine made, and she said them far better than I could. I know that the super block needs something on it and nobody is gonna build us a garden. That's the case. We need something there. So in that case, I am for a development. However, I don't believe you told us from the very beginning that you'd need the tax break. And I think that costs us in the long run. I, I know I've heard you over and over how much we're going to make on this, but could there be a change? If it was smaller, would you need the tax break? If you bought, built something smaller?
No, you know, the problem is that there's tremendous, because it's oceanfront property and people have referenced Superstorm Sandy several times, there's tremendous cost associated with the parking infrastructure that's necessary. You need a certain yield on the property in order to finance all of the infrastructure that goes along with a project like this in this location.
Is there a limit to the profit that you can make? When iStar was here, I think they said something about an 8% profit.
Not only is there no limit to the profit, there's also no limit to the potential losses. It's a very risky proposition to invest this amount of money on the waterfront, especially COVID, especially everything else that's going on. You know, this is a tremendous, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty about the financial future.
Will you be involved for all 25 years of the pilot, Engel Berman? Or will you, you know, leave once all of the units are sold?
So their history has been that they locate property, they build the property, they reach out the community, they get the entitlements, and they stay on the property long-term. Now condominiums obviously are owned by the individual property owners, you know, like the Aqua, so they don't own the Aqua. But certainly, you know, I think that building has a very good reputation and, you know, I think the plan is that they're gonna own it to keep it. That's what they do. And that's their track record. That's one of the advantages of this development team over some of the prior ones, that these guys are Long Island-based and have a track record you can look to.
We had a couple of really speeches from union members, and I understand that they're anxious to get jobs, but as Catherine said, how many of those jobs will be for Long Beach people? How many long-term jobs? You know, union means union comes in. It doesn't mean that it's for the local people to work here. And I don't suppose you can guarantee that it would be local people working.
Right. But I think, once again, we have, I'd point to the track record that Engel Berman, the contractors they hire tend to be Long Island contractors with local employees. And, you know, they're right, there's no guarantee. And actually, technically, it would be illegal to actually say that only people from a certain area can get those jobs. But, you know, I think the track record shows it, and certainly intention is to try and have local people working. There's no reason for that not to be the case.
All right. And then finally, I know this has been addressed. I know that you tried your best to have a personal meeting as we have here, but you can see from the number of people here and the number of people who signed onto Zoom how low this attendance is. When we had meetings at City Hall, you had to stand outside and wait to be let in. The, the place was full and crowded. This is not a good time to have a meeting.
Well, what I would point out, that is why we started meeting with people back in November. And we had a series of meetings, I think certainly more than prior developers have. And I...
Yes, I was with one of the civic groups that, that had you come in. And, you know, that was very helpful at the time, but now it's right here.
Let me answer that because this is the IDA. First of all, there never is a good time for everyone to have a meeting. The city asked us to do this in person. We went out of our way to accomplish that. We have another hearing tonight. People are welcome to, to come. Whether they choose to come or participate is really up to them. So I think while I hear what you're saying and I appreciate it, I will tell you that this is an extraordinary event on Long Island. You won't see many local governments or boards meeting in person and having hearings in person. And I, I have to say, and I want to thank Harry and, and the IDA staff for all the work that went into this. You, you may know that we had to cancel the last meeting because there were power outages in Long Beach as well as ironically at this hotel. So there's never a perfect day, but I'm very proud of what the IDA has done to do this hearing. Whether people participate is really up to them.
And Mr. Chairman...
It's extraordinary times, yes.
I'll just add one, one comment. In terms of Zoom participation, we have 86 folks participating via Zoom with seven waiting in line to make comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last in-person speaker until I receive more registrations is Mr. Kyle Strober.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, IDA members. My name is Kyle Strober. I reside at 630 Shore Road in Long Beach, and I strongly support the project. I support the project for three reasons. First and foremost, this property has laid to waste for decades. If anyone here has drank at Nolan's, you might remember the former bartender Brian, who said in the 80s, his high school teacher in Long Beach assigned him, what should we do with the super block? I know, Nora, you've been there before and probably know Brian as well. This property is nothing but, this, 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 along with various other properties, have just been dirt and debris-filled, filled lots along the boardwalk. It's an eyesore and it's an embarrassment. It's cost the city millions of dollars in legal fees, and that also costs the taxpayers and residents. This today is finally a solid proposal and a realistic proposal for the property that we're talking about. The second rea, the second reason I support the project is that our region is in desperate need of diverse housing options. I know that the IDA here has taken initiative to create more affordable and diverse housing options to attract young people as well as allow seniors age in place. This project here has a workforce, workforce housing component of it. And yes, I know, most of the project is luxury condos and apartments. But regardless if their luxury units are affordable, the more units we bring online here on Long Island increases the supply of diverse housing units, therefore decreases the demand. And that units that were once affordable, once, once unaffordable, then become affordable. And eventually, 30 years down the road, this project that will be beautiful at first will grow old and those luxury units may not be unaffordable, but will also too become affordable. So for that reason, I also support the project. And lastly, in the most important region, is the dirt property will finally generate substantial revenue for our city that desperately needs financial help. I mean, I'm sure everybody here who lives in Long Beach knows how dire the financial straits are. And regardless of, you know, what you think, you know, Elise, I'm, Elise and I have been here for 15 years. We didn't go to high school here, so we're not considered a local. But we have a two-year-old and we're looking to purchase a home. We like the canals, we like West Home, but right now prices are outrageous. And more importantly, taxes here are high and they're only gonna go up. You know, we have the luxury of having a police department and a fire department, which are, you know, do a great job serving our community, but they cost money and their costs are gonna go up. And if we don't start putting properties like this online to help offset the costs, this city and this community will become unaffordable and drive people like me and Elise out. It's just the truth. So for those three reasons, you know, I stand here as a Long Beach resident in strong support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strober. At this point, I just want to call out that it is 4:20 at the beginning due to delays. We said we'd extend the meeting until 5:20. Catherine, we have eight hands raised on Zoom. I would like to take all of those consecutively. So if you can please call them out in order, we'll proceed.
I'd like to welcome Edward Walpole.
Hello, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, good afternoon, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is Edward Walpole. I live at 429 West Park Avenue in Long Beach. I'm a lifetime citizen here, over 50 years. I'm a local 68 steam fitter, so I just want to voice my opinion and say that I'm in support of the project and for job creation for union labor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walpole. Catherine?
We now have Mr. Paul Fetcher. Paul, are you with us?
Yes, it's me. Okay. My name is Paul Fetcher. I've been a resident of Long Beach for over 30 years. I am former president of the New York State Commercial Association of Realtors. I am former president of the New York Metro CCIM Chapter, and I'm a proud member of the Commercial and Industrial Broker Society of Long Island with over 350 local members. I think that we can see by virtue of the fact that the iStar program did not proceed when they did not get the IDA, is that this deal does not pencil out but for the IDA's help in getting us up, open and operating. One of the challenges we have in Nassau County is that Nassau County has the dubious honor of being the largest rain drain in the ages of 18 to 35. Kids grow up on Long Island, they go to college, and they stay away. Part of that is affordable housing and the total amount of housing that's available. Long Beach is a victim of our own success. People want to live here and we need an increase in housing stock. If I look at the United States of America globally, approximately 36% of the housing stock nationally is rental stock. In Nassau County, it is less than half of that. It's 16%. Nassau County desperately needs rental housing. And the opportunity to add several hundred units to be put together by a responsible developer, what more could we ask for? In terms of the numbers and the expenses and everything else, the best guesstimate as Nelson Pope, first of all, the best I can say is about $31 million. It might be $32, $35 million. It might be $29 million. But if somebody came up to me today and said... me today and said, "You know what? I thought I was going to give you 31, but all I have is $28 million to give you above and beyond your present budget and what's going on, above and beyond after we've taken care of expenses," I would gladly accept that. This is something, and the only cushion we have in sight against the push and pull that we have of ongoing costs of delivering services throughout the county and the city of Long Beach. Intelligent development, smart development, is the best thing we can ask for. We have seen the resurgence of a number of communities throughout Long Island, be it a Patchogue or Huntington, or even Long Beach, which are far more vital today than they were 20 years ago. It only makes sense to embrace a responsible development from a responsible developer attempting to move forward with an as-of-right development. There have been other things that have proposed that have sought variances which are not in keeping with the character of the area. Differently, we have to say that Engel Berman is well thought out, is well preserved, and is the best thing we can do. In 30 years, I've been looking at a vacant lot. I want to see this become the best that it can be. And I say that on behalf of my personal interest in the city of Long Beach, on behalf of, I'm also the Board of Directors for the Commercial Network, for the Long Island Board of Realtors, who are crying for this, 28,000 members, and we are definitely in favor of a sound development and the IDA assisting this so that it can be economically viable. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your contribution.
Thank you, Mr. Fetter. Catherine, who's next?
We now have Mike Malloy. Mike?
Mr. Malloy, you may need to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I was muted. Okay, I'm a 30-year resident of Long Beach, a 20-year homeowner and taxpayer. I live at 26 Forrester Street, Long Beach, New York, in the Canals. I'm a member of Local 15, the International Union of Operating Engineers in New York, which is the heavy machine operators and also surveyors. Myself, I'm a surveyor. I've built high-rise structures in Manhattan for over 25 years. You know, there's a few things, like, first of all, what I don't understand, if this is such a desirable piece of real estate, which it is, and we all know the values will not go down in due time, why we have to give so much away in tax breaks? And not to say there shouldn't be some, but it seems a little extreme. I'd like to say that why couldn't it be done by, say, a union contractor? Because there are many people in this community who are part of the trade unions and skilled labor, who do work and would be employed here if those companies were to get it, such as when the boardwalk was redone after the hurricane. It just seems crazy that some of the money were given away. And the quality that you would get from union tradesmen, and what kind of money we'd put back into the community would be phenomenal. I do feel there is somewhat of an issue with the parking, because that land has been utilized in the summers for years for people to park and other issues. But my main thing is, I'm all for it, as long as it's a fair issue with the tax breaks. And that's kind of all I had to say, and that it should be done by union labor, and that could be worked out because there are a lot of union tradesmen in this town that would get work there. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Malloy.
And if you could help me get the job as the surveyor there, International Union Operating Engineers. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make a point that you raised. I thank you for participating. On the union side, first of all, two of our board members are union leaders. One, Anthony Simon, is headed, currently head of the Long Island Railroad's largest union, and the other, my good friend Chris Fusco, formerly head of the Carpenters Union. And I will tell you that the union involvement is critical. At the request of our board and our staff, we convened a meeting with the principals, Jan Berman and Steve Krieger, and Matt Arisich, and the Building Trades. And they have assured us that there have been continuing positive discussions about utilizing a significant proportion of the jobs for union labor. I will tell you that is a critical necessity as far as our board's support, and we appreciate your comments. We recognize them, and will work to that goal and insist that the Engel Berman group does the same. Thank you.
Okay, Catherine, next.
We now have Amy Rappaport.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having this meeting. I grew up in Long Beach. I moved away for some time, but had a summer residence here, and now I'm a full-time resident. I've been very involved over the years with parks, as I was a Parks Commissioner in my community. And I would like to see off-site improvements in basically trees. Someone spoke earlier about a park. We may not be able to have six acres, have any park on it, but we certainly can ask for off-site improvements, which many developers do provide for. Since Long Beach lost all the, well, many of the trees, a lot have been replaced, but they certainly are not up to snuff. I miss the trees in Long Beach when I'm a walker and a bike rider, and I'm missing the trees tremendously. I would like to see large trees planted, a circumference of four or five inches, and total, you know, coverage on your development and off your development, maybe along all of Broadway, maybe down some of the boulevards, but there needs to be green, and it's missing. I would appreciate some of the off-site improvements to be healthy for Long Beach, and that would be adding trees here. And that's really what I have to say. And I hope there is some request from Long Beach to help with the replanting. Thank you.
Yes, this is Dan Deegan. I would just point out, and once again, I'm going to go, point to the track record of this developer, Engel Berman, and the other communities they've worked with and done projects along Long Island. And they work very well with the community in identifying, you know, things just like this beautification, and certainly will continue that track record of working with the community to identify what can be done to make the project as beautiful as possible and potential, you know, public improvements.
Catherine?
We now have Charles Bartels.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank you for having a meeting. Also, as far as your project is go, I have mixed feelings. I am a 50-year-plus member of Building Trades Local, and when you're talking union, I'm hoping you're talking Building Trades, the construction, not some of these other unions that are running around. I'm also more than a 50-year resident of Long Beach. One question I had, which I haven't been able to get answered, is how many residents do you see filling those towers, including the condos and the rentals? How many bedrooms are going to be in those units?
Yeah, so this, you know, that has been analyzed. So those are two separate questions. And one's a tactical question, they're both tactical, actually, how many bedrooms there are? I don't know if you have, just trying to see. I mean, I can give you, if somebody wants to do the math, there's 20 studios, which is one bedroom, 91 bedrooms, and 128 two-bedrooms in the rental. And I think the condos are all two bedrooms? Yeah. And the condos are, yeah. And condominiums are all two bedrooms.
Are you potentially talking about well more than 1,000 people living in those three facilities?
Yeah, there have been projections made in terms of what the likelihood is, but I believe it's less than that.
Yeah, it's 366 bedrooms on the rental, and maybe four, less than 400 on the condo.
Yeah, so total bedrooms is 766.
Okay, so a ballpark figure I would think would be 1,000, but maybe not. As far as the project goes, there definitely has to be something built there. I'm sick of looking at the empty lot like everybody else. But, again, as a Building Trades member, I'd love to see it go. But as a resident, I have, I have some feelings and some questions. The retail space that's going to be there, is that part of the pilot program? Are they going to pay their full share of taxes?
It's all one structure that's included in the pilot.
So we're going to be renting it out to restaurants or stores, and it's going to be taxed at a lower rate or no rate, even though we're pulling, you were pulling money out of it?
Well, listen, that's one of the things that we received a lot of input from, from the community at all those meetings, is they wanted to see the boardwalk activated. They wanted to see a public plaza, which is not something that the developer makes money off of, and they want to see a restaurant. Be easier to put apartments or some other thing in that space, but the restaurant, we believe also will be good for the project in terms of mixing it. But, you know, it is a commercial enterprise that is part of the, the IDA's financial assistance. But, you know, relatively de minimis compared to the entire project.
All right. Well, my other question would be with the increase of residents. I mean, if you lived in Long Beach or you've been visiting here often, I assume, you know what it's like to park not by the facility. I know you're going to have plenty of spots. But you can't go to dinner in the middle of town anymore without having to drive around for 10, 15 minutes looking for a spot. I don't know how we're going to accommodate all of those extra cars. Just one of my concerns as a resident, and my other concern is the safety of the structure. I know there'll be sprinkler systems put in by the fitters. I know there'll be other safety features. But God forbid a fire starts in one of those buildings, a fire. Long Beach Fire Department, which we're probably going to have to add members to because of the project, I don't understand how they, or will they have the ability to fight those fires? We have nothing in Long Beach that is, you know, equivalent to that right now. And I'm sort of concerned about the outcome of a fire in those floors.
Right. Well, in terms of the construction methods that are going to be utilized, you know, typical apartment buildings are wood-stick frame, which has, presents its own set of issues. And one of the reasons why a project like this does require the assistance of the IDA is because of the tremendous construction costs. And those construction costs are driven in large part by the construction methods that have to be in place in order to make this a safe building, in order to be state-of-the-art from a fire safety perspective, and, you know, from a flood prevention, you know, and resiliency perspective. So a lot of the cost, and it's tremendous compared to a typical building, are related to safety issues. In terms of the, you know, you heard the indication before, Matty Arisich, he's from the Nassau Suffolk Building Trades, he's the president of that, and that's who
Yes, I spoke to Matty. I know Matty well.
I just want to very quickly try to address the previous question on the retail space. So the condominium portion, the benefits that we provide as an agency is as per New York State law. So therefore, we are unable, if we even desire to, to provide a pilot against the condo units. We are additionally, we're not allowed to provide pilot benefits for retail and retail space. Now, the 6,500 square feet retail space is a minimal percentage of the overall development. But I just want to ask our counsel, Mr. Andrew Camarini, in the pilot schedule, and again, it's a very minimal percentage, but have we excerpted out the retail space? In the microphone, please?
So because any retail component that is on the, on the condo side of the facility would certainly not receive any pilot benefits. And to the extent there is any retail component that is within the benefited, within the rental side of the facility, which, again, that entire portion of the facility is subject to the pilot, but we would ensure that the, that the retail component is under the mandated limit pursuant to the IDA Act, which, if you translated to square footages, would be roughly one-third, and based on, you know, what has been presented in the application, it would be significantly less. And that is something that the company actually has to covenant to throughout the IDA documents.
And just while you're on the subject of that restaurant and retail, and the parking issue, the restaurant that would be provided will have its own parking, separate and apart from the residential parking. And I think, as you said, you were aware, this project is overparked. If anything, it's well over, 1,000 spaces are going to be constructed here to service both the residential units and the, and that small commercial portion. So we're hoping to be alleviating parking, or certainly not adding to whatever issues the city has citywide.
Thank you, everyone. Catherine, our next?
We now have Stephen Goldfeder. Stephen?
Okay, I'm going to try it again. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Sorry about before I was there. Thanks for letting me speak. I appreciate it. You know, I'm a pretty, I'm a pretty fact-based person, and I've seen a tremendous amount of drama surrounding this project. So I just, I want to just try and dispel some of the drama and get it back to what the facts are. There's been article after article talking about the pilot program and focusing on the money that it's going to cost taxpayers. However, it is not going to cost taxpayers. This is a large development with multiple components, and focusing on one component rather than focusing on the development as a whole is unfair to any developer that would look to develop the site. When we look at this project as a whole, it is more than simply a pilot program. It's a development that brings tax revenue into Long Beach from day one. Here is another fact. Any developer that develops this property, whether it's Engel Berman or anybody else, needs to make money. This is a business, and as a business, they are there to make money. Engel Berman has chosen to develop the property using the current building codes. The question that I don't hear being answered is, can any developer make adequate money building on that site within the current building codes? If the answer is no, and a developer cannot make money, they have options. They can ask for a variance to the current building codes, which people in Long Beach will not want, and which Engel Berman has chosen not to do. They can ask for a pilot program, as Engel Berman has done. There may, by the way, be other options. However, I hear so many people focused on what they do not want, and I've not heard one person come up with a viable alternative to the pilot program that allows the developer to make money and develop the site. And if that solution exists, I think anybody would be open to hearing the solution that allows Engel Berman to make the money that they need, and allows Long Beach to make the money that they need. So clearly, I am a resident that is in favor of this program. This, this project is of a quality in the construction and the design that has not been seen in Long Beach, and frankly, has not been seen elsewhere on Long Island. It is an opportunity to attract new high-net-worth residents that had thus far not considered Long Beach as a place to reside. It is even more important at a time when residents of New York City are looking for alternative housing arrangements. And people that had previously not looked to Long Beach as an opportunity, as an option for housing, may now look to Long Beach as a place to go to find their new residence. Along with that, we have the community development that will be required to support high-net-worth residents and a high-value development. Furthermore, this will attract and let other developers see that there is opportunity to develop in Long Beach, so that people who have seen Long Beach as a challenging environment before might now take a second look. Last thing I just want to remind everybody is that the I-Star lawsuit is looming. And my understanding, and I might be wrong, is that that I-Star lawsuit goes away when this project moves forward. And that is an important thing to consider. So thank you for letting me speak my piece. I appreciate it. I'm in favor of this. And by the way, I'm a Long Beach resident. I live at 765 West Beach Street in Long Beach. I've been here for about 15 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now have Eric Berkowitz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Thank you. Well, firstly, I think the project is great.
Well, firstly, I think the project is great. It brings life to a property that really has laid barren for over 30 years. I'm a 35-year resident here, so it's at least 35 years. We appreciate, I appreciate Engel Berman staying within the codes and really no variance needed. And hopefully, it can add jobs to our local union workers, assuming the job goes, Building Trades. But with that said, Long Beach is fiscally irresponsible. We have virtually zero oversight. Long Beach is nearly, or it is broke, and we're facing and we're staring at a $14 million deficit. We have the highest labor cost really for any municipality or city in the country. And our borrowing needs, limited borrowing need, a limited borrowing capacity. And now we're looking at adding more services with essentially no revenue. So how do we get through this? You know, after the tax breaks are approved, which they ought to be by Nassau County and the IDA, my question is, how can Nassau County make Long Beach financially sound? Thank you.
So Mr. Berkowitz, this is Dan Deegan. I don't know if you were listening to the entire presentation, but at, at the beginning, we pointed out, and it wasn't so much the city itself, but the city's outside consultants who, you know, represent a lot of different municipalities. And they did an analysis of what the impact would be, considering what the incremental cost to the city would be from these additional residents and from the building. And they determined what those costs likely are to be, and they compared that to the revenue that would be generated, even with the pilot, from the condos and the rental building, and said that over the next 25 years, this is going to be a net $32 million positive cash flow event for the city, after all those expenses are taken into account.
No, I heard all that and I understand, and I, and I get it. And that's, that helps the city. But we're adding, you know, more services at a time when we don't have the money. At the end of the day, I'm sure, you know, something is going to be figured out. But my real question is, is, you know, how Nassau County is making a decision through the IDA for the tax break. You know, how do we get backstopped? We're, we're $14 million deficit today, not in 25 years, but today, which is, you know, clearly a bigger issue than what's being discussed here, for sure. But as a resident, as a property owner, a couple of properties, I have value in this town, and I see this, this as being a significant improvement to value. But it doesn't solve our financial issues in town. Nassau County is, I don't want to say spending our money, but I get it, you know, then needs to make the project viable. I'm all for the project. Let me say that. So my question is, you know, we're in need of money. And, and what can Nassau County do to help Long Beach?
Well, and so some of the issues that you're raising are much larger issues than this project. And this project, there's no doubt, cannot solve all the issues for the city of Long Beach or for the county. But this project is a step in the right direction. This project's part of the solution to those problems, not the entire solution, but it's part of the solution and a positive influence on hopefully resolving those, you know, cash issues and revenue issues over a long period of time. So, you know, because everything can't be solved here, there's not a reason not to go forward with starting to solve the problem, starting to get a tax base, putting a piece of property that's been off the tax rolls for all intents and purposes, back on the tax rolls, eliminating a $100 million lawsuit against the city. These are all positive steps, putting infrastructure improvements into the area, creating more spendable income, you know, as you indicated, a project like this hopefully is going to bring everyone else's property values up around it as the, you know, it's not only new housing stock, it's a renewal of housing stock that's necessary. So as properties get older, this is kind of a natural cycle to take this piece of property that at one time, I believe, did have housing on it and put brand-new state-of-the-art housing with new residents that are going to be an economic positive for the city.
And if I, if I may, just for clarification for everyone in the room, this is Harry Coghlan of the IDA. The IDA is actually a New York State Public Benefit Corporation for the benefit of the residents of Nassau County. So we cannot directly answer questions regarding how will Nassau County backstop or fill in or anything of that nature. There's nobody here technically from the county administration to address the issue.
Let me just answer one point. You know, I, it happened, and Harry and I, and, you know, we work very closely with the county executive, Laura Karen. And I know that she cares a great deal about Long Beach. I spoke to her this morning about this project and these hearings. And I will be glad to speak to her about things that the county can do outside of the IDA that can help the city of Long Beach. I do want to say that, you know, I have been in regular communication with City Council President John Bendo, appreciate his support and his, his concerns and feelings about the city of Long Beach. And I understand where you're going. I do think this is a major step in helping the city and bringing needed revenues. But I understand there are other issues out there, and I will talk to the county executive and maybe you can contact me through the IDA and we can talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, next.
We now have Francis Walpole.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. Hello, my name is Francis Walpole. I'm a lifelong resident of Long Beach. I was born in the hospital that is now closed. I live at 446 East Market Street, and I'm in favor of this project. It's a sensible project. It brings, it's going to bring revenue into the city. I'm also a local 638 steam fitter, and I think it'll bring jobs before, during, and after for residents. I think it's a good opportunity for many tradesmen to get jobs at this job site. I think it's a very positive project for our community. And thank you, and I'd like to see it get approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Catherine?
We now have Patrick Manna.
Mr. Manna?
Hear me?
Lightly, could you speak up, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Patrick Manna. I reside at 36 Bay Street in East Atlantic Beach. Moved down here after college. I'm currently looking at houses in EAB and the West End as well. As a UA Local 200 plumber, who's been employed on seven Engel Berman projects in the past, I am in support of this project, not only to create work for our local union brothers and sisters, but to bring an end to the eyesore this plot has created on our shoreline. As both a resident of the island and a union member, I support this project and approve the IDA's award if they use the Building Trades. That is all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Catherine, next.
We now have Tracy Eitler.
Hi, could you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you. I had some questions about parking that I haven't been able to get answered. First question is, will residents be charged for their parking spots? Or will the parking spots come with the units?
They're included with the units.
They're included with the units.
Both rental and condo?
Correct.
Yes.
The other question is, of the 6,500 square feet of retail space, how much of that is actually dedicated to a restaurant?
All of it. It's going to be a grab-and-go on the boardwalk and a small restaurant above it, which will be a year-round restaurant. So the grab-and-go will be seasonal, and the other one will be to service the people living in the building and the community year-round.
6,500 feet is quite large. It actually will hold 541 people at round tables. So of the 1,000 parking spots, how many are reserved for restaurant people?
It's two restaurants. There's going to be a grab-and-go on the boardwalk, which should be the bulk of the space where people, like a Panera Bread kind of a feeling place, where you can come in and get a salad or a sandwich and bring it to the beach, and we'll deliver it to the beach. There'll be a small restaurant on the level above that for, you know, full year. We're expecting no more than 90 to 100 seats in the restaurant.
And there will be parking available for 90 to 100 restaurant seats?
There's over 100 parking spots dedicated to the restaurant needs.
Will they be charged for that, restaurant goes?
No, as long as you're eating in the restaurant, there's no charge for it. You'll have to get validated so that people won't, you know, say they're using the restaurant, but not, but they'll have to get validated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have Scott. Scott, I'm going to ask you to please state and spell your last name.
Scott Quinlan, Q-U-I-N-L-A-N. I'm a 30-year resident of Long Beach, 703 Neptune Boulevard, Long Beach, and also a local 580 union member. I am in support of this project as I have been all along. I am always heartbroken to watch that empty space just sit there on the boardwalk. 30 years of not collecting anything to support Long Beach out of that, out of that property is a total loss. So as long as this job is done with union labor, I'm in full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We now have Robyn Donovan.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hold on, let me just turn this. Okay, my, sorry about that. My name is Robyn Donovan. I am a 20-year resident and homeowner at A Clark Street. I am in favor of this project, especially due to the fact we are the most financially distressed city in New York State. I thank you. And can you tell me, do you know the super block deficit that I have been paying on my tax bill for the past five years? Will it be coming off my tax bill once the project is approved? And will I also get a reimbursement for monies I have already paid?
I'm not sure what's on your tax bill, but there's not going to be any reimbursement in place. This will generate new revenues, which hopefully will positively impact your tax bills going forward.
That may be the cost of litigating this lawsuit. Then they may well have a special tax to cover the legal bills, which I'm sure could be millions of dollars. But that will, but that will stop as soon as we get our approvals and we get going. So whatever you're spending for legal fees will go away.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for joining us. Catherine, can you please confirm to me at this point that there were no further raised hands on Zoom?
I confirm.
Okay, so we are sitting here at 5 o'clock. I committed to an additional 20 minutes of the hearing. It appears we've exhausted all registered commenters, both in person as well as on Zoom. So I will allow for another two minutes per speaker if anyone else wishes to revisit their prior comments. Seeing no raised hands in person or online, I thank you all for joining us. On behalf of the agency, I would like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for their comments with respect to the project and the financial assistance. This meeting is temporarily adjourned and will reconvene at 6:30 PM this evening. Thank you all.